Double standard here, so we're, we're gonna hold the end of our bargain, but we need to make sure that if they don't hold the end of their bargain, then of course that we, we, we are, there's consequences, right? Because we wanna make sure that these dollars are spent wise. We wanna make sure these dollars are spent in the most appropriate way, and we wanna make sure we're hitting all those metrics that we need. And that, in order for those to be, you know, get the return of investment of those dollars that we're, we're putting in, so. I, I do also, you know, I just do have heartburn on this. Um, I think we need to re, re-talk about just if we even move forward on this uh, at all, but I, I'm right now not, not that comfortable with it at all, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Representative Hernandez followed by Representative Fierro.
Um, there was a question about how members of council feel, so I wanted to share um, that I, that I have always criticized our policy and the definition of our FTE. The, the Department of Labor has a completely different definition than what we consider. And so if you are working over thirty hours, I think it's thirty or thirty-two hours, you'll have to correct me, Karina. Um, then that is considered full-time employment. For whatever reason, we chose forty hours to be the arbitrary number on what's considered full-time employment. Had that definition been correct at the forefront, we wouldn't have had this issue in the first place. Um, so, so I understand, Representative Canales, your, your concern. And I think because there's not a defined um, process and, and how to treat these issues. Um, I think that, you know, it is in the best interest of the city to continue working with ADP because of the opportunities that they are providing for hundreds of families in El Paso. At, I mean, it's very rare that we see um, corporate corporations in El Paso, and then it's even further rare um, when we see prevailing wages and even above prevailing wages. And so I think in good faith, the city should consider this friendly amendment. Um, and put together a, a clear framework. When situations happen like this where it's out of our control, um, maybe economic uh, issues uh, depending on the market, then we should have an opportunity to review case-by-case scenario. But again, full-time employment is not twenty-eighty hours a year. It is significantly less, and that's the standard of the state and is also the standard with the federal government. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Representative Fierro?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And Representative Hernandez, not to offend you, but I agree with you, one hundred and ten percent. You know, uh, we, we're talking about moving goalposts and moving targets and, and, and the, the point on the, the state and federal full-time number is not what we're using. Well, this is an opportunity for you as the interim director and Colonel Weston to work together and make those changes. A- and, and I think it's very important that we work with the, the, the economic development companies are, are thriving our community. And so, I mean, they're still getting full benefits at the lower hours, and that doesn't mean that they can't get higher hours. So I, I, I agree with you, and um, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and we need to work with what's making our community thrive. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, and um, just what is considered uh, full-time? I, I thought when you did the briefing with me, you told me thirty-five hours?
So we are dropping the definition to thirty-five hours.
Okay.
Um, but Representative Hernandez is correct that the federal labor standard is thirty-two hours.
Okay, but when you briefed us, you said thirty-five.
But thirty-five hours matches the state, and a lot of the things that we do when we get state funding for these things too, from a compliance standpoint. It'd make, it would make sense, I believe, for us to, to adjust it to the state standard, which is what I, I would recommend.
Thank you. Representative Canales?
I'll be really brief this time. I was just doing the math because I was curious. Um, to, the current uh, at least according to what I can find online, median, median county wage is twenty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents an hour. Is, are we not? Is that off?
Let me pull it up.
It's okay. I'll share my math here while you look at it, and if it's wrong, then it's wrong.
No, the median hourly wage for El Paso MSA that we're using for this year is sixteen forty-three.
Okay, then I was looking at something wrong. But it's okay, we can do it really fast. Sixteen forty-three, correct?
And that was, yes, and that was fourteen seventy-one in twenty-twenty, just so everybody knows that, that jumps up.
All right, forgive me while I uh, do a little bit of quick.
While you're doing it, I think.
It's median versus average, you're correct, that average is twenty-one twenty-seven, which one were you?
There we go, okay, median. So ninety percent of that median county wage would be fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, seventy-nine cents, I guess, rounded?
Yep.
Okay, so I, your numbers here, it's about the same. Uh, at ninety percent of the median county wage and two thousand eighty hours, that, that uh, full-time equivalent, you know, that FTE employee essentially, that, that employee would be making thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And then at eighteen hundred twenty hours, uh, at the full one hundred percent sixteen forty-three, that's a reduction down to twenty-nine thousand nine hundred two. That's a reduction of about eight hundred, eight hundred dollars a year. I share that just for everyone's information, we are talking about a real reduction in pay for employees um, as a result of this adjustment. And again, that's, you know, there's a lot of employees we're talking about. What are the actuals for one thousand one hundred new FTEs?
You're saying if the, if the agreement stays the same, because we're increasing that to a hundred percent?
Correct, yeah, so it's uh, I did twen- two thousand eighty hours at fourteen seventy-eight and eighteen hundred twenty hours at sixteen forty-three.
And to that, I would say we can get actuals for you, but these are minimum contractual investments. They are paying above and will likely do more hours than that, it's, you know, we're, we're looking at more employees.
Well, yes, but again, I mean, they're, they're the minimums, but they didn't meet the, they didn't meet the minimum.
Correct.
And so with some employees, they will be going above this.
They met the minimum on pay, not the number of employees, yeah, of course.
No, not the number of employees earning that pay, right. Okay, yeah, again, I shared it just for people's information, I think it's good to put that out there, like, i- it is a real reduction in what they are minimally can, required to, to pay their employees um, in order to receive a tax incentive from the city. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I think it's important also to note that the ADP has been a partner of our community since two thousand and twelve?
Twelve?
Right, they've been a good partner to the community, and again, it's brought quality jobs and given a lot of people, and, and I'll run into them at the store, and I'll run to them somewhere, and uh, they'll tell me that uh, because of ADP, they've had the opportunity to buy a home. And uh, be part of this community, and, and I, I think that's really important, is, you know, we can always get jobs, but uh, creating the future is really what it's all about, so thank you for that.
Mayor make motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
There was a motion made by Representative Hernandez, seconded by Representative Rivera.
Well, then why is that?
Exactly, we second her, so.
There was a motion made by Representative Hernandez, seconded by Representative Rivera to approve item forty. On that motion, call for the vote. Representative Salcido?
Aye.
Thank you, and the voting session, and the motion passes seven to one. Representative Kennedy voting nay, the remainder of council voting aye, the motion does carry. That brings us to item number forty-one, and this is discussion and action that the city manager or designee be authorized to sign a tax increment reinvestment zone reimbursement agreement between the City of El Paso and Jordan Foster Construction to reimburse contractor for the construction, installation, and implementation of street improvements contained within the public right-of-way and generally located on West Main Drive between North Santa Fe Street and North El Paso Street. There is a motion made by Representative Fierro, seconded by Representative Hernandez to approve item forty-one.
I just do have a question on that before we move forward on it. Um, this item was not bid, was put out for bid at all? We just awarded it?
Correct. I'll, I'll take it. Uh, Karina Brazgala, Economic and International Development, um, no, this is a reimbursement agreement. Because the funding for this project is through the tax increment reinvestment zone, there's a provision that allows us to enter directly into an agreement with a contractor.
So we don't have to get the best price since we're getting reimbursed? That's what it sounded like.
No, so the reimbursement means, sorry, let me clarify that. Um, so the reimbursement means that um, they are going to essentially finance the construction of the project. And once it is completed and it is, you know, turned into the city, then uh, they are reimbursed for the cost of the project through the TERS five funds. And this is a mechanism that's available to us in very unique circumstances such as this one, where timing is crucial. Uh, we wanna make sure that the improvements are done in time for La Nueva's grand opening. As you know, construction for La Nueva, all of their staging took place on Main Street. So until the construction for the museum is complete, we can't go in and make the improvements. Nor could we do it prior to construction of La Nueva, or it would have been completely torn up by the construction of La Nueva. And so it's just very unique circumstances um, whi- which led us to want to pursue this type of contract for the reimbursement agreement.
And this is the company that's doing, the construction company that's actually doing the construction of the museum?
Of the actual museum, correct, and so the, it's a continuity of, of work.
We didn't go out for bid, we awarded this, and based on the type of work we have, do we have an analysis of cost per, you know, square foot, square yard, whatever we use? Do you have that that you can share with me?
Um, so part of the backup includes the cost estimates that were submitted by the contractor. And we did actually do um, extensive negotiations with them to make sure that they would come in.
Where's that?
Do you want us to, from the backup?
So if you, you're comparing it to other jobs and co- I, I understand what they gave us, but I'm talking about comparison to what it costs, if I did that across the street and someone else did it, how would the costs compare?
Right, so we did do internally uh, revisions of similar work based on other work that CID has currently.
Can you put that in the backup?
I don't know that we put in other cost estimates in the packet, I could provide that information.
Yeah, I just, um, I just, like I said, just because we're getting reimbursed, it's a little bad idea that we didn't really bid it out. And with that, I'll just leave it at that. There's a motion in a second?
Yes, sir, the motion was made by Representative Fierro.
Representative Kennedy, did we, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
When did we know we were gonna have to fix the street?
We did not know that we would have the funding secured for fixing the street until.
That's not what I asked. When did, when were we aware that there would have to be repairs on that street? How long ago?
As soon as the construction for La Nueva started.
And when did it start?
It started in two thousand twenty-one.
So in two thousand twenty-one, we knew we were gonna have to fix this street? We got the funding a meeting ago or two meetings ago?
No, the funding was approved last year.
Last year? So we've known we've had funding for a year, we've known for multiple years that we were gonna fix the street. I even believe that the people that are in the contract would have been the low bid because they have equipment on site, they have equipment next door, and the cost of them doing the street would be less than somebody having to, you know, take the equipment out, move the equipment, and I understand that from the construction side. My concern is, we've known for years we were supposed to fix the street, we've known for a year that we had the funding for it. And, I mean, I may be a little fatigued, because when y'all dropped off the reimbursement agreement for me, which I appreciate, I spent most of the night reading it because that, I'm a geek. But um, I'm concerned that we knew a long time ago, and then we're gonna suddenly come in and go, hey, guys, guess what, we just gave you an eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar project out.
So maybe important to note, Representative, is that the construction documents for the project, they were not completed until October of twenty twenty-three. And so that gave us a really small window of time for us to put the contract documents out for bid.
But you knew years ago that we were gonna have to fix this street.
Correct, sir.
And you knew a year ago that you had funding for it. Even though the construction documents weren't done, you knew that. And what I'm saying is, I think it should have been bid. I think that honestly, I'm firmly convinced that the same people would have won the bid, just from the construction standpoint. It makes me uncomfortable.
Thank you, sir. Representative Hernandez?
I, I just wanted to expand on two things you said. Um, you mentioned, um, of course, the construction documents, you mean by, you mean the design, right?
Actual, exactly, so it's the design and the specification. So we partnered with the Community Foundation on this. This is the phase one implementation of our downtown street tree master plan. But we did have to do additional design work to coordinate with the landscape design that La Nueva was already implementing on the north side of Main Street. And they partnered with us by paying for the design, so they're the ones that procured the construction documents and specifications for that project.
You mean El Paso Community Foundation?
The Community Foundation, exactly, La Nueva.
I understand, um, you can't issue a solicitation if you don't have the design works, because you don't know what the cost is gonna be overall, so I, I get that. Um, now, you mentioned a provision where we can enter into contractual negotiations. I believe that's a purchasing rule that we can do that. Can you explain that further, and can you um, explain the economies of scale that we can achieve by partnering with the same contractor?
Okay, um, so in, and, and let me know if I'm answering your question. In the negotiations that we entered prior to moving forward with the.
No, there's a, there's a, uh, yes.
So I, I'm looking up the specific provision, but Daniela can speak to kind of contract, the economies of scale that.
Okay, sure, sure.
So we'll take the second half.
I think, uh, we talked about it, you know, cutting in and out, so I just wanted a reference for council's knowledge.
Yeah, um, so what, and let me know if I'm answering your question. Um, what we did was negotiate with Jordan Foster, and again, had um, comparisons with other bids, and so we were able to go line item by line item to know that we were getting the best possible price, or at least comparable prices to other projects that use similar, that are doing or dealing with similar improvements. And so we were able to negotiate with them uh, to make sure that we would get under the eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar cap, because this is the only money that we have to spend on this project, there is no increasing the amount. This is the only funds that were approved by TERS five and council, so the project cannot go above eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. So we worked diligently with them to ensure that um, they came in at under that with some room, um, with some contingency room as well.
Understood.
Um, and then the specific language, and it's in the uh, agreement recitals, is section three eleven point zero zero eight B three of the Texas Tax Code, the Act. City Council has the authority to enter into agreements that are deemed necessary or convenient to implement the project plan and to achieve the purpose of the project plan.
Okay, so we have, there's no legality concerns, it's all um, within our authority, so tha- that was what I wanted to express to council, thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, no, so it's the bottom of, uh, it's page one, it's the last whereas on the agreement, um, the first page. So section three eleven point zero zero eight B three of, and that's under chapter three eleven of the Texas Tax Code. That's what creates and establishes tax increment reinvestment zones. Um, council has the authority to enter into agreements that are deemed necessary or convenient to implement, implement the project plan and achieve the purpose of the project plan. Um, as this allocation was approved in accordance with the project plan for TERS five, the money is, you know, uh, toward, going towards the objectives of completing the plan. Um, and then three eleven point zero one zero G, bidding requirements of chapter two fifty-two Texas Local Government Code do not apply to dedication, pledge, or other use of revenue in the tax increment fund for a reinvestment zone.
Thank you. Now, Colonel Weston and uh, Ms. Prime, the video is down, but is audio still working?
The live stream is down, Mayor. Uh, they need to relaunch it once we recess the meeting.
Mm-hmm. So is it on?
Do they need to recess and? Yeah, okay.
Laura Cruz, for the record, we need to recess for about, um, I wanna say about ten minutes, and then we can relaunch so that we can
Okay, thank you for that.
Reprogram it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move to recess for ten minutes?
There's a motion in a second to recess the council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is, is in recess at five twenty-nine PM for ten minutes in order to fix a technical issue.
We'll see you in twenty. You seem to double what we said.
It was uh, forty-five.
I know.
An hour and ten minutes.
Mayor, it seems we're back on, we're back on.
City council members, the video's back up.
Move to re.
We need one more member to have a quorum, please.
Mayor Protem? And then we'll have a forum.
Move to reconvene?
Art's on a ten-minute break, he'll be back in an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to reconvene the city council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is back in session at five thirty-two PM, and we're on item forty-one.
Could you restart the presentation? Just kidding.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. If we wanted to take that, we do have a motion in a second, Ms. Prime?
Yes, Mayor, the motion was made by Representative Fierro, seconded by Representative Hernandez to approve item forty-one.
Go ahead, ma'am. Take the vote.
Yes, sir. So the motion, there's a motion in a second to approve item forty-one. On that motion, call for the vote. Representative Salcido?
Aye.
Thank you. In the voting session, the motion passes four to one. Representatives Acevedo, Hernandez, Salcido, Canales voting aye. Mayor Protem Kennedy voting nay. Representatives Molinar, Fierro, Rivera not present, the motion carries. Mayor, at this time, will council like to recess for, to convene the Downtown Development Corporation meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? There's a motion in a second to recess the city council meeting, all in favor? Anyone opposed? The meeting is in recess at five thirty-four PM in order to conduct the Downtown Development Corporation meeting. Mayor, would you like to convene the Downtown Development Corporation meeting?
I'm waiting for Representative Fierro to walk up.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, this is a meeting of the El Paso Downtown Development Corporation for Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Board Chair Lisa is present and presiding along with Board Directors Kennedy, Acevedo, Hernandez, Fierro, Canales, and Salcido is joining virtually. That brings us to item number one on the agenda, and this is the approval of the April eleventh meeting minutes.
What time did we originally recess? Uh, when we're going to get back on?
The first time, oh, when we were, that was at five thirty. We recessed at five twenty-nine to fix a technical issue.
Five twenty-nine?
Yes, sir.
All right, before we keep going, I'll wait four more minutes, and then we can start, just so um, we'll wait a few minutes, I know that we're, we reconvene, but we'll just wait a few minutes for him to come back up, I'm, I'm texting him to get up here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Pardon me, ma'am? All right, we can begin, it's five forty, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Board Director Molinar arrived at five thirty-eight. The first item on the agenda is approval of the April eleventh. Yes, sir. Board Director Molinar arrived at five thirty-eight. The first item on the agenda is approval of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
And Representative Rivera is right there, so we're ready to go.
Yes, sir. Board Director Rivera arrived at five forty. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? There's a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes. On that motion, call for the vote. Ms. Salcido?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Canales? Thank you. In the voting session, and the motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item number two, and this is a report on the FY twenty twenty-three Downtown Development Corporation and Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan status.
So we have two presentations on this agenda item. I'll be doing an update on the performance of the ballpark revenues and the expenditures related, and then Sam Rodriguez will follow me with the presentation related to the five-year capital improvement plan for the ballpark. When we adjourn this meeting, go back to the city council. Item number forty-two on the regular agenda will be the action item to approve the five-year capital improvement project for the ballpark. If I, you will bring up that presentation, please. Thank you. So in summary, the hotel occupancy tax, in particular the two percent project venue tax, which is dedicated to the ballpark, which is approved by the voters back in two thousand twelve, continues to perform extremely well. Not only have we seen consistency related to the occupancy with our hotel occupancy, but we've seen an uptick in our average daily rate, which is a good sign that we continue to see quality rooms and strong demand for our hotels in the El Paso area. Most importantly, and I'll say this slowly and loudly, is that this will be the second year in a row where we will not need any general fund subsidy to either pay for any of the debt related to the ballpark. So again, no general fund subsidy needed for the debt payment for the ballpark, nor are we recommending any general fund money for the capital improvements related to the five-years CIP. So one more time, no general fund money for either the debt or the recommended capital improvement projects over at the ballpark. And so where's that coming from? I'll cover that through the next few slides on where that revenue is coming from. So this slide shows you the historical, going back to two thousand fourteen of the ballpark. You can see the first eight years of the ballpark operations. The general fund was subsidizing the debt payment related to the ballpark. So not even any discussion about capital project funding. There wasn't enough money in those first eight years to fully fund the debt payment, which was planned. When the ballpark was financed, that was the plan all along. We knew the general fund, when it was presented, was going to require a subsidy in those first several years. Some early models were twelve years, some were fifteen years, so that number kind of fluctuated. But as I mentioned, you see the far, two right columns there in the last two full fiscal years. This is an update for our fiscal year that ended in FY twenty twenty-three, which ended in August this past year. You'll see those last two years, a positive number, which represents the excess dedicated ballpark revenues, again, being generated by that two percent hotel occupancy tax, which is dedicated for the ballpark. And so in twenty twenty-two, one point four million, and twenty twenty-three, one point one million. So this slide just shows you, again, the breakdown of the different revenue sources. Primary revenue source for the debt and the capital projects is the hotel occupancy tax. Again, that two percent project venue tax that was approved back in two thousand twelve. And you can see over time, the gradual increase in that top line there, the hotel occupancy tax. Again, really strong growth in that revenue source, an increase of about six point six percent. Again, a little bit higher than what we've seen historically, but again encouraging that we continue to see steady occupancy and increase in the average daily rates. You can see the different, again, revenue sources there, the ticket sales, parking, the investment interest. There was a mention from some metro earlier, we do invest these funds, stays within the ballpark fund. One of the things about this, and you'll hear this when I do the presentation next year, is that every five years with the agreement with Mount Star Sports Group, we see a ten percent increase in the lease, the parking and the ticket portion that the city receives. And so in this current fiscal year, twenty twenty-four, there was the ten percent increase, and so we'll see, again, those reflected when I do the presentation next year in those revenue sources. On the expenditure side, again, you can see here the debt payments, principal and interest, and then that second to the last line, right above the total, the transfer to ballpark for capital projects. Again, that's the amount that was in excess of the amount needed to make the debt payment. And so, as I mentioned, that one point one million dollar number for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. I will point out that if you do the math on these, you're not going to see a direct correlation between the revenues minus expenses. Our reporting, our external audit is not finalized yet, but these are as close to finalized as you're going to get. When we do the calculation on what the amount is available for the capital projects, we do that back in September. And so we're still collecting hotel occupancy tax all the way through mid-October. That gets accrued back into our fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Those hotel occupancy revenues are quarterly. And so some of those revenues that we receive in the middle of October actually apply back to the prior fiscal year. And so again, you're not going to see a direct correlation. And so again, anything in excess will remain in the fund. And again, we just continue to update this every year as we move forward. As I mentioned, the hotel occupancy revenue continues to perform well. You'll see, again, the historical going back to twenty fourteen. Where we were, we saw continuous increases all the way up through twenty nineteen, and then we see, obviously, the impact that COVID had on this revenue source, about a two-year impact, and we've seen a really nice bounce back in the last two years. Again, three point nine million in twenty twenty-two, and then up to four point two million in twenty twenty-three. Again, representing about a six point six percent increase on that revenue. As I mentioned, the hotel occupancy has remained relatively stable, which is a good sign that we've not seen a a drop off. We've also, again, not seen an increase, but again, continuing to hover right around that seventy percent mark is a really strong indicator of the strong demand for our hotels in El Paso. This is one that obviously plays a key role as, as well, not just the occupancy, but also what's the average daily rate? So on average, what are hotel rooms running for? You'll see, going back to January of twenty twenty-one, we were right around seventy-four dollars, and you can see that gradual increase over the last several years. We actually broke in November, which is the most recent data that I received. We should be getting the updated numbers pretty soon for December, but we did break that hundred-dollar mark. So again, very encouraging that we continue to see increases in the average daily rate for our hotels. So as we look ahead, again, I work very closely with Sam Rodriguez and his team. We're looking at what's going to be available for capital improvements from the dedicated ballpark revenue. We're not projecting a six point six increase percent every year in our hotel occupancy revenue. Typically, we like to be more conservative. Two and a half to three percent is more on average. Hotel occupancy tax audits will continue. Members of FOAC are familiar with Eduardo Carrone and the work that he does utilizing our outside firm that does audits on an annual basis on our hotels to ensure that we're in compliance and that we're receiving the hotel revenue that's due to the city. But also anytime that a hotel may overpay, we also make sure that we're refunding those revenues as well. As I mentioned, the city portion of the rent, parking, and ticket does increase in the current fiscal year, so that'll be reflective in the report that we do next year. And then again, as I mentioned when I started, the capital projects that you're going to hear Sam Rodriguez present right now are being recommended to be fully funded by the excess revenue that's dedicated for the ballpark. Again, so the two percent hotel occupancy tax revenue dedicated for the ballpark to fund those projects, again, not utilizing general fund money to fund those projects over the next five years. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, Sam Rodriguez will pick up and present the five-year CIP for the ballpark.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Mayor. Council Sam Rodriguez, Chief Operations Officer. What I'll present to you is the five-year CIP for the ballpark. As part of the agreement, we are required to bring to council a five-year CIP on a yearly basis. The last one that was approved by city council was in January of twenty twenty-three, so approximately a year ago. This is a city-owned facility that is leased out to Mount Star Sports Group, and they are coming up on their eleventh baseball season for the Chihuahuas. As part of the agreement, the city is responsible for capital projects. Everything that we review, we check against the, the GAAP, the general accounting, general accepted accounting principles to understand what the capital improvements are, as well as the definitions of the agreement. Mountain Star Sports Group in turn is responsible for the maintenance and operation and the upkeep of the ballpark. They continue to maintain a very high quality amongst triple-A teams across the nation, and it does include their operations and maintenance of the facility itself. We've completed thirty-three projects to date, and this is the list of the projects dating back to twenty seventeen. I'm going to go to the next slide here to talk about the process before I give you the summary. So from a process standpoint, the team provides the city a list of requests. In this particular year, they requested approximately eleven million dollars worth of projects. From there, we review the list of projects. We inspect with CID team members and engineers. We go through and we meet with them. We evaluate the request. Then we meet with the CFO, Robert Cortinas, to understand the available funding source, and then that's how we base the recommendation to city council. This year, we are recommending a CIP of six point eight one eight million dollars with an estimated revenue of six point eight two five million dollars. The way the five-year CIP works is last year, as I mentioned, in twenty twenty-three, you approve a five-year that included fiscal years twenty-three to twenty-seven. And so those projects were approved, and now we're increasing or updating numbers, plus adding additional projects based on the current revenue. As I mentioned, we did not approve all of the requests from the, from the team itself. We are, we are deferring four point two million dollars worth of projects, primarily in the renovations and aesthetics components of them. But at some point, we will have to come back to council with potentially additional revenue sources. As we know, the, the ballpark is getting older, and we do anticipate additional capital costs as, as we move ahead. Again, more definition on the capital, capital program. Again, what's being proposed, and it's in, it's in your backup, it's a little hard to read on the screen. It is a total of six point eight one eight million, and it does not include the four point two, the column on the right that has been deferred, that we told the team is not going to get funded this year as part of this approval. When you look at the allocation of the funding, we are focusing on the structure, the operations, and security. Again, that totals about four point eight million dollars. We did include some funding for the splash park upgrades as part of the architecture interiors. That's two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, as well as a hundred thousand dollars of outdoor improvements. And then the concession equipment has primarily been deferred to outer years, with the exception of some equipment that failed. Again, just a blow-up of each one of those sections. You could see all the gray areas have not been included into the current proposed and recommended CIP, with the exception of splash park renovations and outdoor replacements. And then the structure and operations and security. Again, primarily, we're starting to see a lot of concrete joints that need to get replaced, again, to maintain the integrity of the structure. MLB upgrades as well, like the wall padding, TV production, as well as HVAC lighting equipment in the plumbing water treatment facility. Now, food and retail, again, most of this has been deferred out beyond the next five years. And that is the recommendation to city council. As Robert mentioned, item forty-two on the regular city council, we will ask for formal action on this recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for taking your time last week, and I know we, we walked and toured the the facility to kind of look at some of the things that needed to be done. Colonel Western went with us. People from Mountain Star were there, and some of the questions I had, and I'm hoping that we'll have some answers for, is some of the things that we're, they're asking for, is that the responsibility is a maintenance item? Or is it a responsibility of the ballpark, of the owners? Because it's a upgrade that's asked for by Major League Baseball. Were you able to find that out?
I did, Mayor, and then I did send out an email to all members of council. When you look at definitions, and I'll pull it up here. When you look at definitions of a capital improvement, which is page three of the lease agreement, subsection C includes requirements imposed by Major League Baseball, minor league baseball, and/or PCL as applicable to the ballpark, is, is a definition under the capital plan.
Thank you for doing that for us, and again, thank you for, for setting it up and taking your time to, to look at that, because we take this serious when it comes to looking at the investment as we own that ballpark. And I just want to make sure that if we do pay a penny, it's a penny that's required from us to pay for. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Representative Kennedy, Mayor Protem?
Can you go back to slide seven, sir? Additional funding sources will be required for the four point two?
Yeah, in the future. It's not right now. We do anticipate that those, those improvements that they have requested, that we deferred out, those are in the column, the gray column. They're not being recommended today, today, but as we move forward with, we anticipate some of these costs to do come into the next five-year cycle. Again, we're talking approval today through twenty twenty-eight. So even beyond that, at some point, we're going to need some funding, not necessarily for these four point two, but additional funding source to keep up with the ballpark.
So we're not promising or allocating any general funds?
Correct. That is correct.
I just wanted to make that really clear. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that's based on current revenue?
Just so that I'm clear at a hundred percent. What they requested originally was about eleven million dollars, which is the six point eight, if you can bring it back up to the screen. It's a six point eight million plus a four point two. That, that was the original request that we received. Obviously, the funding is not available for all of that, so we are pushing four point two. We told, we basically told them this is not being funded as part of this approval.
And so as I mentioned, the revenue projections that we use, again, are very conservative based on what we're looking at as far as increases in the dedicated hotel occupancy tax revenue. So again, we update this every year, and so if we see another six percent increase next year, we'll continue to revise that estimate going forward. I don't want to present an overly optimistic standpoint. I'd rather have conservative number, not overspend, as opposed to coming in short on the amount that they're going to need for those capital projects. So we review it every year.
And I think it's important to, to note that our current revenue, when we talk about revenue and performance, a lot of it's not due to the ball, the ball team. It's done to the two percent hot tax, the team's attendance and ticket sales. We get very minimal. We don't get anything from, and you want to check on the naming rights and stuff like that, that you sent me that?
I did, Mayor, and the, the naming rights are part of, that revenue goes back to the team.
Yeah, so a lot of it, like I said, it's not on the performance and, and and whether people go to the game or not, it's very minimal that we get. Perfect example is parking. When the parking was done, there was a five-dollar charge, but the city got one dollar. Now the charge is still, is now ten dollars, but the city still only gets one dollar. So that didn't increase, but yet they got a huge bump on, on their end of it. So all the revenue that we really have to look at and continue to look at, for the most part, is going to be the hot tax for how we pay off and, and balance that note. Thank you. Representative Canales, did you do the math?
I, I did.
I knew that. I knew that.
I did. This is, it's, it's a very, very relevant, a little bit of a side comment. I think I've made this comment to you before, Mr. Cortinas. I do, I wanted to point out, I'm here on Air DNA. Air DNA provides statistics on short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are theoretically a source of, of hotel occupancy tax, and they are for most communities across our state who, who choose to collect that. It's something that's already in our code, and we, for whatever reason, as a policy decision, are choosing not to collect hotel occupancy tax from, from owners of short-term rentals. Using the, the current data that I'm seeing from Air DNA, we have about five thousand four hundred eighty-seven total available listings in El Paso at an average daily rate of ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. It's an occupancy rate of thirty-seven percent. And multiply everything together, times three hundred sixty-five days, times that two percent hotel occupancy tax that is dedicated to the ballpark. We are missing out on one million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars of dedicated ballpark revenue if we had collected that hotel occupancy tax on short-term rentals. I think it's important for the community to hear. You know, we've provided, not for the last two years, thankfully, but in the past, general fund subsidy to the ballpark, and we had to do that in part because we're not collecting on a source of, of dedicated revenue for this particular expenditure that we have, that we make on this five-year cycle. So just pointing that out for the public. Thanks.
Thank you. And again, and I'll repeat what I said, was the two percent hot tax is so important, and things that we have coming up, like the Democratic Convention, will be very important, and will be very impactful, and help us a lot. and help us a lot in a lot of the things. We're also doing the Firefighters Texas Convention here, and that'll help a lot. So, there's a lot of things that the city and Destination El Paso are working together with, plus the federal government. One of our biggest, and I wouldn't say one of the biggest, our biggest driver in our community is the federal government, which is the military. And they really do help us quite a bit when it comes to reimbursement. And one of the largest catalysts for the economy of our community. So, thank you for that.
One of the reasons why, as you've mentioned in the past, is the need to look at possible expansion at the convention center. And so, we do collect a portion of the hotel occupancy taxes dedicated for capital improvements. And so, we have been collecting that. We built up a little bit of fund, and so Colonel Western made some comments to me. We were looking at some potential options. And again, that would really help attract more conventions, more larger conventions, which would help that hotel occupancy tax revenue.
Thank you, yes, sir. Thank you for that. And with that, Representative Fuhr.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Cortinas, don't go far, please. I have a quick question for you. In regard to this hotel motel tax, and thank you for your calculator, Representative Canales, what benefits do the hotel motels get versus the short-term rentals for paying that hotel motel tax? Are there any incentives, tax breaks? They get nothing more for paying that hotel motel tax?
No, so the hotel occupancy tax revenue has restrictions on what it can be used for. And so, it's intended use for marketing, tourism. It helps take care of some of our city facilities, which bring in tourists.
The question is, what do they receive in benefits?
Do hotels receive?
Yes, what do the hotels receive in benefits for paying that hotel motel tax?
Well, the intention is that you're bringing more tourists to your city, which would obviously increase the occupancy at those hotels, which would generate more revenue for those operating those hotels.
So, they get nothing more for paying those taxes besides the potential of more?
Increasing business.
Okay, I'll have to look that up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Representative Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express my support for what's being recommended today. I do think we need to have a serious conversation about how we're going to protect and enhance a city asset. We have to remind the public that the ballpark belongs to the city of El Paso. And the last thing that I want is a Cohen two point O where there is deterioration through neglect, and it is upon this leadership to ensure that we are obtaining, upkeeping the ballpark. So, can you bring back a proposal sooner than later? Because this is a five-year CIP, the longer that we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. And I don't think that we can afford to wait any longer because those costs, as we hear with all rising costs with construction, will escalate, and there is a time delay expense that we need to factor in into the four point two million. That number can change just based on waiting. Can you bring a proposal soon?
Yes, we've had some discussions about potential revenue sources that we could use, not using general fund money. We're in the very early stages of that. So, absolutely, I mean, we're going to continue to look at every potential option, only for the ballpark. But everything else we do, as far as the city providing services to the community. I mean, you did touch on it. We do know that the ballpark is in the heart of the downtown area. It's a major attraction. We have the Children Museum about to open, the Mexican-American Cultural Center. You have a large museum district. So, obviously, we need to make sure that we're keeping up with that facility as a high-visibility project in the downtown area. We'll be paying the debt on that ballpark for another twenty years. And so, we do need to make sure that we're investing in it, not only by making the debt payment, but on the capital project side as well to create a high-quality venue for our community to take advantage of.
Understood. And there's no action on this item, but on the City Council?
Item forty-two on the regular council agenda is the action.
Back on the regular agenda.
The five-year CIP is actual requirement from master lease agreement that we sent out last week as well. We're required to bring that to the council for the approval on an annual basis.
Thank you. And again, I just want to make sure that as a staff and as a city and as elected officials, we maximize and make sure we only pay what we're required to pay. Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
There's a motion in a second to adjourn the Downtown Development Corporation meeting. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And the Downtown Development Corporation meeting for Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four is adjourned at six oh four PM. Is there a motion to reconvene the regular City? There's a motion in a second to reconvene the regular City Council meeting. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And the regular City Council meeting is back in session at six oh five PM. We now move to item number forty-two, and this is discussion and action on a resolution approving capital improvements totaling approximately six point eight million dollars. That includes two point five million of previously completed projects for the document known as a five-year capital maintenance improvement plan for the ballpark for FY two thousand and twenty-four through FY two thousand and twenty-eight, and approving the use of five-year ballpark estimated revenues as funding sources and authorizing the city manager to make all necessary budget transfers to complete the improvements as outlined in Exhibit A of the resolution.
Move to approve.
There's a motion made by Representative Hernandez, seconded by Representative Rivera, to approve item forty-two. Mayor, we do have public comment. We have Ms. Osmond.
You've already approved, though, right?
No, ma'am, that's, we just took a motion to approve right now. We didn't take any action on the original item.
You know what? Fair point, Ms. Hernandez, as far as Cohen two point O. I personally have not stepped into the Chihuahua Stadium. Been given a lot of tickets, I will not go, just out of principle because of what did happen. I was around with all the bond work with Cohen. I'm curious, five-year improvement, how long do they estimate the ballpark's going to stick around before some other real estate investor decides, hey, you know what? We need to knock it down and build something else up? Because he already said that it was twenty years that we're going to pay off this debt. This is five years, six million, plus another four, you know, coming soon. So, I'm just curious, how long do we expect the current stadium to be around?
It all depends how you maintain it and take care of it.
How long was Cohen?
It, you know, I walked it, and the stadium looks in great shape, to be honest with you. After ten years, they've done a really good job, whether you support it or I support it or not. The stadium is in really excellent condition, and it actually, when I went through every part of it, including the locker rooms, it actually exceeds a lot of the things for Major League Baseball.
So, as far as the parking?
If you don't maintain it, it will last a lot less.
So, is the city going to ask for more parking? Like you mentioned, you know, a dollar versus how they bumped that up. And as far as short-term, a lot of cities have killed their Airbnb's, Verbal, and so forth because it's bad for the communities. I'm not too sure either of you understand that. But the tax revenue, it's not paid by the hotel. It's actually paid by those that are renting. I don't know how long it's been since you rented a hotel, but that hotel tax is paid by who's renting the hotel room, not by the hotel. So, we need to consider what's going to happen in the future of Airbnb and Verbores because, quite frankly, they're going down. So, that's not necessarily a revenue stream to look forward to because we all know what's been happening with Airbnb, and it's going down. So, short-term, not necessarily the focus to look forward to. And I am curious as to if we're going to get more revenue stream, maybe from the parking or what have you. Thank you.
And with that, we have a motion in a second?
Yes, sir. The motion was made by Representative Hernandez, seconded by Representative Rivera, to approve item forty-two. On that motion, call for the vote. Representative Salcido?
Aye.
Thank you. End the voting session, and the motion passes unanimously.
No, we're going to take forty-four before forty-three, just because forty-four will, we have people waiting, and I think forty-three may be a little longer.
Thank you, sir. Item forty-four is discussion and action requesting council support for Eco El Paso's grant application to the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service FY twenty-four Community Forestry Grants Program.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Omar Martinez, Capital Improvements Department. So, today's item is a partner grant application, Eco El Paso, who have been with us since eleven AM today. It is a smaller grant, it's only twenty thousand dollars. However, it is fully funded separately, and will help implement some of the city's planning documents for tree planting. And it is also part of a larger climate action plan portfolio, project portfolio. It's an example of how we can partner with our community members and mobilize organizations to ensure that we get the external resources we need to implement these priority projects. And so, we're going to talk a little bit about Eco El Paso, and then what their Million Trees Initiative is all about. And then quickly, the grant application, and then we'll take into the council item. So, Eco El Paso, a five oh one C three, they focus on public engagement and education. Their Million Trees El Paso Initiative is what this project is under today. They also focus on the Frontera Solar Energy Program. They work with us on transportation and electric vehicle projects, and also renewable energy. And so, Million Trees El Paso, it's a tree planting program, and the overall goal is to plant one million new native or drought-tolerant trees in the El Paso region. Million Trees is pretty much a worldwide initiative. You'll find other cities, other communities also working on their Million Trees Initiative. And so, nine one five Treekeepers falls under the umbrella of what Million Trees would be. And so, they fund their tree planting program through grants, community donations, sponsorships, and in-kind labor contributions. It is their group of volunteers that support them and are able to bring these types of projects at a reduced cost. Previous grants they've secured have been thirty thousand dollars, actually, with the recent grant that they got from. Yes, so it's an initial of ten thousand dollars, so that's forty thousand dollars. And they source their saplings locally, and to date, they've planted more than eight hundred trees. If anybody from the public wants to learn more, or you council members, there's a link to their website. The forest, Community Forestry Grant is funded by the USDA, and this is a grant program that the city of El Paso can take advantage of in future years to advance the city's tree planting priorities. In this case, however, this is a smaller scaled grant. It's twenty thousand dollars that would come from Texas A&amp;M University, which gets funneled through them. And the Paso del Norte Community Foundation provided five thousand dollars as cost share for this program. The rest of the cost share requirement would come from six hundred and fifty volunteer hours. Project timeline, if approved by, if the grant is approved, would take twenty-four months. And their scope of work includes planting three hundred and fifty trees at a cost of forty to forty-five dollars per tree that is significantly cheaper than what the city of El Paso can do if we do the project. What they are asking from the city, in addition to a statement of support, is the ability to use city facilities and right-of-way as they plan the sites. They don't, they're not proposing the final sites in the grant application. If awarded, they would come back to the city, work with staff, come back to council for their final tree planting recommendations. However, we do have to include that partnership as part of the grant application if we want to take advantage of it in the future. The city does not put any cash into this project. And so, this is the way the project is outlined. Again, it's Eco El Paso that is leading the project. The Paso del Norte Community Foundation is acting as their funding administrator, and they provided some cash match. To do this, they created the Million Trees Fund, which any member of the community, including the city of El Paso, can take advantage of. There are philanthropic funds that are not accessible for the city that can be leveraged and provided towards this fund. The only thing the city has done through the Capital Improvements Department is provide technical assistance in writing their grant application, and then this facility's in right-of-way request. The application is due in three days. It's pretty much done. We're just pending this request. As all, with all city grants, we provided an economic impact analysis as requested by Mr. Rivera. And pretty much from here on into the future, we're going to do this function. And so, even though it is a forty thousand dollar investment, it's primarily going to go towards labor, but this investment would have a total impact of sixty-eight thousand and change. On this community, it would impact one employee, and that's just because the way the scope of work is written. Only one person will be, will receive a site band to work on this. And with that, that is a resolution requesting for you all to approve the resolution supporting the grant application. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. We also have Josh, who's the Executive Director of Eco El Paso, and Blanca, who's the President of Eco El Paso, to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. And with that, Representative Hernandez, followed by Representative Canales.
Thanks, Mayor. I wholeheartedly support this effort. I think this is just a really eloquent way to leverage our city fundings with federal grants. So, really appreciate that. I just wanted to welcome you to introduce yourselves and to see what your intentions are moving forward.
Yes, thank you for the welcome. Good afternoon, Your Honor, Council, and city staff. More than anything, I wanted to take this opportunity to mention what an immense pleasure and honor it has been to work with and get to know the city staff over the years, more so this past year and present, especially the friendly neighborhood bureaucrats, Omar Martinez, who is present, and Adriana Pulacio, who is not present. As a token of appreciation, we've brought some merch because without your support, it wouldn't have been possible to get this far. We ask for your favorable vote on this item to have the opportunity to get the, to get this grant and continue our efforts this year. I'll go ahead and let our executive director present himself before we share our merch. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Distinguished City Staff. It's a pleasure again to be in front of all of you, this time with an ask for some very beneficial action with the approval of this action item in support of our pursuit of a grant application with Texas A&amp;M Forest, Urban Forestry Service. So, we do have some shirts here. If you'd be, you're welcome to have one, and it'd be a great attire and apparel to show off when we do these tree plantings, if not in support of your vote today or in the future. As you know, we're always looking and seeking ways to acquire funding so we can get, use every dollar that we acquire to put a tree in the ground. Last year in two thousand and twenty-three, we were able to put in upwards of about a hundred and fifteen trees alone from our grant application from one tree planted, and along with other sources that we were able to put other trees for other initiatives. So, we like to quantize and go bigger with this grant application. And this is not, this is the first of many that we're in pursuit of. So, we are looking forward to the partnership to be developed here, as long with our partners in the Paso del Norte Community Foundation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Representative Canales.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, just to, just to, maybe this is more for me than for them. I'll take you back into storytime for just a minute. In two thousand and seven, New York City Parks launched their Million Trees Program, Million Trees NYC. And in two thousand and nine, I started working in the, at the Natural Areas Program at the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation. And in a roundabout way, ended up overseeing the Natural Areas Volunteers Program that ran their Million Trees project. So, in New York, they partnered with New York Restoration Project, very much the same role that you are filling with us today. And it was great to see that the partnership flourished there. You know, the city be very supportive of the nonprofit who was carrying out the work. And again, you know, being, acting as the beneficiary of these grants. And in two thousand and fifteen, New York City planted their millionth tree through the Million Trees NYC Initiative. So, it's a shame, unfortunately, that El Paso didn't launch our Million Trees Program back in two thousand and seven. And, you know, it'll take us a while to get to our millionth tree. But there's no better time to start than now. And I really appreciate the work you're doing. Obviously, I'm not the most mobile at the moment, but it'll take a while for you to get this grant and get through your planning phase. So, hopefully, I'll be well enough to go be out there planting trees with you as soon as, as soon as you have the funds from this grant because I'm confident you'll get it, you'll get the funding. And yeah, we'll plant some trees together. So, thank you all.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second?
Yes, sir, and there is public comment from Lori Marshall. Lori Marshall? No? And we did receive a statement in support from Iberti Trevino. With that, there's a motion made by Representative Hernandez, seconded by Representative, alternate Mayor Potem Molinar, to approve. Mayor Potem Molinar to approve. Item 44 on that motion, call for the vote. Representative Salcido?
Aye.
Thank you. End the voting session and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. For the merchandise that they brought, can they approach you all? How does it work?
What's that?
They want to take a picture.
Yeah, you might want to try his early morning. We don't always look this bad. Here, we'll stand right here so we don't have to recess. You want to come over here?
They want pictures.
Oh, they want to give them. Thank goodness. Actually, we don't always look this bad, most of us.
This discussion in action on a resolution approving an alternate site for the multipurpose
They're all pretty.
Cultural and Performing Arts Center and directing the interim city manager to take necessary
Yeah.
steps in preparation and support of the project.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Daniela Casada, City Architect for the Record, here to walk you through the presentation of the alternate site selection for the MPC as well as the Union Depot Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment Report. And so in today's presentation, we'll be reviewing for context, previous work, the site SWOT analysis of other sites considered by the consultants, and then we'll jump right into the Phase Two ESA report findings and recommendations. We also have the consultant who led the study, who's here to answer any additional technical questions you all may have. And then we'll discuss grants and other work associated with the site and wrap up with next steps and staff recommendations. So just as a general reminder, we are here because of the council directive given in January of 2023, where council directed staff to look for alternative city facilities or city-owned properties where we could cite the MPC and honor the will of the voters. So in looking at the downtown footprint, which the bond language stipulates the MPC had to be cited within, we started looking at the previous footprint, then extended it with the adoption of the Uptown Downtown and Surrounding Areas Plan to give us more parcels and properties to consider. When looking at the different sites, we had the criteria identified by the Gensler Feasibility Study. The key takeaways are what informed the criteria, which is the size and type of facility that one, our market could sustain, and two, that we could afford with the voter-approved funds. The other crucial key takeaway was the public input received through the public engagement process. Here's a quick highlight of some summary points from that public engagement plan. We had over 1,500 survey participants take our online survey. This is where we saw that there was great support for integrating outdoor events and existing urban context into the project. And very importantly, through two focus group work sessions, we crafted the guiding design principles for the project and this was incorporated into the criteria for the site as well. Just a quick recap of what those guiding design principles are. The site and the project need to be authentic in that they need to retain their connections to the history and sense of place of El Paso. They need to be integrated together. So the facility and the neighborhood need to work in concert, not just contextually, but in scale. It needs to be generative, so it needs to help develop or economically stimulate the surrounding businesses and create more. It needs to be flexible, so it needs to be a venue that can host a series of various events, not just on weeknights, I'm sorry, weekend nights, but on weekdays and in various sizes. It needs to be inviting, welcoming people from different walks of life, not just within our community, but from visiting visitors as well. And last, it needs to be vibrant, so it needs to celebrate El Paso's rich culture and natural beauty. Here's an aerial view of all the sites the consultants considered, including the original project site. They looked at 13 total sites. And you could see highlighted in color other than blue, the top four that through the criteria selection came out as the top contenders. And so looking more closely at the criteria as it pertained to lifestyle and real estate, this had to do with amenities that were within walking distance to the facility, parking infrastructure, speed of acquisition, quality of land use. You could see that Site A, the Union Station Site, was ranked the highest. Here's a visual representation of the scoring of those sites, again showing Site A coming out on top. And here's the conceptual site plan the consultants put together when looking at how the facility, and again, we're looking at a hybrid facility for 8,000-seat capacity, 4,000 indoor, 4,000 outdoor. This is what the feasibility study identified as what we could afford. How it could be laid out in this particular site and they saw opportunities to integrate the existing historic building into the site development as well as potentially more outdoor areas in the form of either retail spaces or entertainment spaces or even a secure VIP parking area. We're looking more closest at the SWOT analysis. I'll first highlight the challenges that we will be addressing in this presentation because as you can see from this slide, the strengths and opportunities far outweigh the weaknesses and the threats. And so to go over first the strengths. This parcel was the only one of the top four that is 100% city-owned, which means that it will allow that speed to market that makes the feasibility of this project possible. It allows for multimodal access or pedestrian-oriented development. And of course, it incorporates the adaptive reuse of a historic building and the opportunity for brownfield remediation that makes the site a sustainability champion. The opportunities the site presents, for one, is introducing an anchor through the MPC for the whole area and solidifying the entertainment district that has already organically developed in this area. There's also a really exciting opportunity to partner with the railroad provider so we can provide a unique guest experience and branding. This would be the only entertainment facility nationwide where visitors could ride the train to see their favorite act. And the other great opportunity is its close proximity to the convention center and other city amenities because we could incorporate the spaces as an extension of the convention center. Going back to the challenges for the site as identified in the SWOT analysis, we do have existing tenants and so we have to contend with the lease agreements. Here's just a very general overview of the current tenants. We're looking at Amtrak, First Transit, Greyhound, and Texas Tech. When it comes to Amtrak, we really want to keep a transit-oriented use in the site. We need to because of our agreements with the FTA, so we would not be looking to terminate that lease agreement, nor would we be looking to terminate the lease agreement with Texas Tech as they occupy space within the historic building and that would not be impacting the development of the MPC. First Transit and Greyhound, through preliminary conversations with them, they have been amenable to moving to maybe more strategically placed facilities, so there is no problem in terminating the lease with those two tenants, just giving them the appropriate notice time. So jumping to the last real challenge was the potential environmental impacts that could be present in the site and this is what moved us to where we are now. On June 5th of last year, council gave another directive to conduct a Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment on the Union Depot. So jumping right into the findings, I'll just point out very quickly, and Jamie Barnes is here. He is the lead for the local firm WSP and he was also the lead for the previous environmental assessments of the site. So we feel very confident in the results and recommendations that his team has put together. Here's an aerial view of the 31 borings that were taken throughout the site. This is a very comprehensive analysis. The borings were taken at various depths, anywhere from 10 to 20, 50 up to 70 feet. And important to note about the site assessment is that we did not go into the Phase Two thinking we were going to find any new information than we already knew. And this had to do with us knowing that in 1990, there was a leak and so there was an impact to the site. There was a leak of the existing storage tanks for fuels. And so from 1991 to 2008, Sun Metro, the city, worked closely with TCEQ. There were various comprehensive studies, remedial activities that were done, so that TCEQ granted closure for the cases in 2009. This is understanding that all the impacts were left in place, they were not moving and the site was perfectly safe to continue to utilize. What the Phase Two ESA findings tell us is there are five large underground storage tanks still present in the site. Four of these have been decommissioned under TCEQ criteria and one is still servicing the existing bus facility. We also see that there is all sorts of equipment, supplies, chemicals that are stored within the site. These also service the current use of the site. There's electrical infrastructure as well. And important to note is that groundwater was only encountered at a pretty deep depths of 31 to 35 feet and there were no volatile organic compounds that were detected. And so this is a kind of itemized list of what those impacts look like and a range of the cost of rough order of magnitude cost of removing these impacts. We're looking at chemical storage, asbestos that may be present in the bus facility, any kind of soil that is excavated and removed when removing either the underground storage tanks or excavating for the foundations of the future facility as well as the existing machinery and equipment. And that range adds up to anywhere from 600,000 to 2.7 million. This is the, the range is very large because we do not have a design. Once we have a design of the facility and we know the footprint of the facility as well as the foundation types, we will be able to hone in with more specificity on exactly how much soil will be excavated, if it will even be anywhere near the hotspots that were identified by the Phase Two ESA. And most importantly, what's coming out of this Phase Two recommendation is that we just have to incorporate proper contractual language covering worker safety when construction does begin on the site for redevelopment. But again, important to note, this is a great opportunity for brownfield remediation and that is the act of removing or sealing off points of contamination within a property in order for the property to see new life. The EPA greatly supports brownfield remediation as well as land revitalization. And again, once we have the design, we'll be able to hone in more closely on the actual cost of the impacts. And again, just it's removing the storage tanks, it's removing machinery and equipment, stored chemicals, and any soil that is excavated in the site. Any questions on the Phase Two ESA before we jump to the next phase? So covering other work, as you're well aware, Sun Metro recently submitted a Phase One application with the Texas Historical Commission for the refurbishing or repairing of all the Union Depot historical windows. This is just a testament of the city's commitment to historic preservation and our investment in our architectural gems for a total of $100,000. I mentioned earlier that there were previous Sun Metro and FTA agreements in place. This means that the site has to remain, or there should remain onsite, a transit-oriented use, but because we see Amtrak as a great partnering opportunity, this does not prove to be any challenge. So the cost of using this site for the project is $0. And so in conclusion, we'll go over the site appropriateness for the project based on the project criteria. So first, it's city-owned, so it, the speed to market is there. It's a brownfield remediation opportunity, which also gives us the opportunity to give some much-needed revitalization to the Union Depot historic use, historic building, excuse me. It will accommodate the 8,000 hybrid facility that the feasibility study identified as being within the voter-approved funds. It's within walking distance of the other city amenities that I mentioned earlier, such as the convention center, our cultural campus, the baseball stadium, and very importantly, to mass transit and to our streetcar corridor on Santa Fe. And again, this presents a really unique opportunity for celebrating the unique character, not just of downtown El Paso, but El Paso in general, gives us an opportunity for a one-of-a-kind entertainment venue in the country. And so if council were to move forward with this site for the MPC, here's a list of the next steps that would be needed. For one, we would need to begin conceptual development and we would do that in conjunction with the public. We would have to give notice to the two tenants with whom we wish to terminate the lease agreement. We would need to start writing and preparing the solicitation for the public-private partnership agreement. This is very important. This will help us identify the developer and the operator for the facility. And to do all this, we're going to need to hire consultants, along with some A&amp;E consultants. We'll need an archaeological surveyor as well as an owner's representative for that P3 agreement solicitation preparation. And looking at a very aggressive timeline, if we were to start in this spring of 2024, we'd be able to start preparing the solicitation papers for the consultants we need to bring on board so that in the summer, we could kick off the public engagement plan as well as the archaeological survey and sharing out some conceptual development strategies as well as being able to move into the fall with coordinations with the THC for incorporating the Union Depot building, releasing the P3 solicitation, and any preliminary site preparations that need to be done so that we could award the P3 agreement in the winter of 2024, 2025. That's when we would begin the full design of the facility and start looking at updated cost estimates. And so with that, I will take any questions, concerns?
We do have Representative Furo, followed by Representative Salcido, followed by Representative Canales.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you remind me what year this bond passed?
2012.
2012. You know, I just, I received an email and then I read an editorial by former city manager Joyce Wilson and she wrote that the community expected a 14,000-seat facility. I don't know if they did or they didn't, but just for conversation, I agree. I think that we deserve a 14,000-seat arena. Having said that, we have 150-ish billion dollars left. And somewhere I heard or read, and maybe from you, that to go to a 14,000-seat facility, we're talking about $500 or $600 million. My question is, where would that money come from? You know, I ran to be fiscally conservative and take care of the taxpayers' dollars and I'm not prepared to go $1 over the 150 million. I just, I know that the voters voted for us to not spend more than $150, $150 million and that's what I might plan on doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I think it's important and probably not fair to the taxpayers or people listening today that you look at a wish list of 14,000-seat capacity, but yet we are not realistic with a $180 million budget.
2012. You know, I just, I received an email, and then I read an editorial by former city manager Joyce Wilson, and she wrote that the community expected a 14,000-seat facility. I don't know if they did or they didn't, but just for conversation, I agree. I, I think that we deserve a 14,000-seat arena. Having said that, we have 150-ish billion dollars left. And somewhere I heard or read, and maybe from you, that to go to a 14,000-seat facility, we're talking about 500 or 600 million dollars. My question is, where would that money come from? You know, I, I ran to be fiscally conservative and take care of the taxpayers' dollars. And, and I'm not prepared to go $1 over the 150 million dollars. I just, I, I know that the voters voted for us to, to not spend more than 150 dollars, 150 million dollars, and that's what, what I, I might plan on doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I think it's important, and probably not fair to the taxpayers or people listening today, that you look at a wish list of 14,000-seat capacity, but yet we are not realistic with a 180-million-dollar budget. Even back in 2012, we knew, and we heard presentations back in '14, that that could not be built for 180 million. It was 250, maybe 300, and, you know, and it was all over the place back then. So even though the taxpayers were told that they would get a 14,000-seat facility, which I, I still argue the word arena, so I would stay with facility, that it was ever budgeted properly. And I know that every year, it's gone from 250 to 300 to 400, and now you're saying 500 to 600 million dollars. So we did, I think the taxpayers overwhelmingly approved an MPC, which is a, a performing arts center. And we are, we do need to listen to the voters and do the will of the voters and do what they voted for, and this brings that forward, what the vote, we told the voters that they would have. There has been a lot of talk back and forth for now 11 years of what really that language was and what happened and didn't happen. But at the end of the day, just like you said, Representative Furo, we had 180 million. We will liquidate the facilities at Duranguito and regain the money that was spent there to its, to the closest capacity, I hope, Colonel Weston. And, but again, we, we are obligated to the taxpayers. And this, Ms. Casada, please correct me if I'm wrong at this point. This budget and this item you're bringing forward, are we within budget that was voted upon in 2012?
That is correct, Mayor. So, and just for a point of clarification, we have approximately 162 million dollars left in the project when you consider the 2% of art that was, you know, originally taken out, and also in encumbered funds that have not been spent. So we're looking at 162 million dollars based on the results of the feasibility study that Gensler completed last year. They showed that a hybrid facility would be anywhere in the range from, for 8,000 seats, would be anywhere in the range from 115 million, if we split 50% indoors, so 4,000 indoors, 50%, 4,000 outdoors, to 183 million, if we were to increase the indoor capacity to 6,500 and only 1,500 outdoor. Now, this is what the city can afford based on the last market assessment feasibility study that was done. But the P3 agreement does open up an opportunity for a private partner to enter into some kind of agreement with the city where they could potentially add to the project fund. But what the city is proposing right now is what the city could do entirely with the funds from the 2012 bond.
Okay, and your estimate you just gave today, is it something that we'd have to build today? Because when I asked you the other day, I said, when would the shovel be in the ground? And your answer to me was 2026.
Correct.
So based on 2026, are these dollars an estimate you gave me today, is that based on 2026 or 2024?
Yes, so that's why there's a range, Mayor, and that's why, and that is important. And that's why, that's the facility we're identifying here, the 8,000 hybrid facility with 4,000 indoor, 4,000 outdoor. That's within our, our budget and our funds.
And what's the size of the facility, 19.4 acres? No, 13.4.
It's almost 13 acres, yes, the size of the parcel, yes. But that's including also the footprint of the Union Depot historic building.
By the way, anyone want to know more, hit it's 19.4. But...
Also, the money that, you said 162 million that's unspent, that's, that does not include what we potentially can get from the sale of the other properties.
Correct.
So there's a potential to, if that, you know, as, as you mentioned, Mayor, whether that's 13 million or maximizing getting somewhere in that, in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Representative Salcido, and thank you for that, Representative Furo.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this council and this mayor, we've had a marathon day today for everybody that enthusiasm and all the items, so just want to thank you all. Do want to also thank you staff on working on this, and you all been working and just going off city council's direction on this, and that's why you all keep coming and proposing. One of the things I really want to focus and really make sure that the public is really well aware of is the community engagement component of it. If, I wanted to, just to give them a, a good, if you can kind of give them a guide, a, like I said, a timeline of how many meetings we've had, like in executive, to get to this point. There is a lot of, you know, misunderstandings with the community. They are, they have thought that we have basically not had enough meetings, and then we're just coming out today, and this is being proposed. So you can kind of just share how many meetings from the beginning to now have we had, and why is it that we cannot speak on these things when we're on executive? Just want to make sure that the public understands, you know, what are we, what guidelines we have to follow.
Yes, Representative, so I don't have the exact number of meetings that we held in executive. I know that the consultants were part of two, and I could recall two more, especially the one where I mentioned in the presentation where the Phase Two ESA directive came out of. The reason we could not take those meetings in a public, open session is because of the, the real estate exemption. And so because the Union Depot site was the only site that was 100% owned by the city, if council had decided to move with any of the other sites, then there would have had to been land acquisition. And so we can't publicly, I guess, announce that the city is interested in purchasing land in, in open session. And I don't know if there's any...
Right. Correct, and I know that some of that, that it might require eminent domain, which I'm not in favor of.
Correct.
Thank you. Representative, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, more questions, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so on, on that, I just wanted to make sure that the community component is really like honed in. I do believe that, we just kind of came out, we were finally able to talk about it, which is today, right? We're, we're letting them know, the community. But the community have got a lot of concerns that they just feel that they wanted to sit down and have a conversation, not just where we're taking a vote right now. They, they ask if they can part be, part of like maybe have two meetings maybe with them, and they have questions, but they feel that we're rushing, or they don't feel like they're part of the process, is really what I gathered. And I want to make sure, you know, I know how contentious it was back then. I just want to make sure we're not missing out on the public and not making them feel comfortable. And my goal is to make them feel comfortable where, while I take this vote, right? So I, I wanted to see if we can have that community meetings before we look at this vote, just so that they can get all their questions answered. That'd be one part that I wanted to talk about. And I don't know if this is a, do we have a pressing timeline here? Or is there a chance to have a little bit of community engagement where they can sit down, they can ask questions, and feel that they're a part of the process and not excluded if, you know, they felt that in the past?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, ma'am, go ahead.
Excuse me. Representative, speed to Marshall, uh, speed to market is crucial for this project. The longer we wait, the less value our funds have to realize this project. Part of our next steps is crafting a robust public or community engagement plan so we could begin incorporating community feedback input conversations about the direction of, of not just the P3 solicitation, but the kinds of programming the community might want to see within the site. However, I, I do not, I do not believe that we will find an alternative site that is going to provide a better opportunity in the time that we have these additional community meetings. And again, we absolutely agree with you that we have to start including the community in these next steps. I don't know that including them before selecting a site is going to make that big of a difference.
I see what you're, and I think, you know, just so I don't exclude, you know, the community. They feel, they just want to sit down. If it's two weeks enough for you all to have that community meeting before this vote is taken, so they just feel that we're not letting them talk to us before we're doing things. So that's, so just, I, I, I mean, how much time do you all feel that you all can get some meeting done, maybe two, that invite the public to come and, and talk? Is two weeks good for the city?
Yes, we're here to take your directive, Representative. If you all wish to, for us to schedule community meetings between now and your next council meeting, we will gladly do so.
For me on this part, just because of the component of how many constituents reached out to me and where they just want to be part of the conversation before the votes, I, I do want to motion to at least have some meetings for two weeks, postpone this item, two weeks to have how many meetings you can possibly have in whatever districts. But just that, that component to be added so that they don't feel excluded, and I don't want to exclude anybody. So if they feel more comfortable with that, I, I, that is why I want to motion to be able to postpone for two weeks to have the community meetings and then be able to feel comfortable taking the vote after they've asked their questions and they feel that they were part of the process. So that, that's my motion. I, I don't know, I can't hear, there's a second, but y'all can let me know.
Mayor, if I may?
For the record, Laura Cruz Acosa, Communications Director, just to advise you all, given the speed-to-market component, my recommendation, if you all wish to move forward on having community meetings, my recommendation is to host virtual meetings. And virtual meetings, at least within the first two weeks, at least two of them, that will allow for all of the districts to be able to participate in these virtual meetings. One of them, we can host if you wish to have it in person. We have host one of them here at City Hall locally and have a centralized location for in-person opportunity. But my recommendation is to have them virtual in order to be able to come back in two weeks.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, it's your prerogative. And if your prerogative in terms of feeling comfortable with the project is to extend that time for the meetings, we, we, you know, we certainly are going to be able to support that. And I don't think there's a dramatic difference in the timing if you choose to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I think being efficient, I think online is, is something that can get done a lot faster. I, I invite that, and so I, I couldn't hear, I don't know, Laura, if you can let me know, did I, did I get attention on that motion?
Yes, Representative Hernandez seconded that motion.
I couldn't hear that, but, but, yeah, so I just, this is more of a, a community approach, and just want to make sure that makes them feel comfortable before I take, I take this vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Representative Canales, followed by Representative Savelo.
And Representative Hernandez, the, the discussion needs to be on the postponement unless Representative Hernandez removes her second to allow for discussion on the item itself.
Can we get a second on that?
Representative Hernandez seconded the postponement for two weeks.
Okay. Okay, let's take that item. Yes, ma'am.
If no one else has a comment to say. The reason why I support Representative Salcido's motion to postpone is because I think we have learned from past experiences that when the public is not included, then this project becomes mired in controversy. And I think it's incredibly important to, to include the public. I don't personally think two weeks is long enough, though. I think we should extend to 30 days, but if we can get two weeks, that's fine. But additionally to that, the folks are asking for economic impact analysis, and so I would ask that part of the postponement that we seek an economic impact analysis at the site as well. So if, Representative Salcido, would you accept that friendly amendment?
Quick question, though, on that, usually how long would the economic impact study take?
Sure, it'd be a lot longer than two weeks.
Let me get clarification, because my understanding is CSL did an economic impact analysis back in January of 2023 as part of this project. If there's, if there's something in addition that you all want based on what was done about a year ago, we can provide you the results of that. I know that that might have even been in the, I don't know if it was in the backup or not.
So it's, it's not in the backup.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is we need to get that to the council so you can take a look at it and do the assessment if there's any additional information you want. That'll help us better scope if there's something else that we need to do with in-plan or one of our assets to be able to do the, the analysis.
And have we gone over that particular form yet?
Well, that had been done back when this was presented back in the January timeframe, like a year ago or so.
No, and, and the reason why I say that is because none of the discussion has been focused on what the impact, the economic spin would be. It has been solely based on site selection with a narrow focus on construction, not about the economic stimulus component. And, and I think that's important to share with the public.
All right, so let's just take, there's been a motion and a second, and that you take the amendment, Representative Salcido?
Yeah, if they can bring back, I think they mentioned they already kind of have something and kind of like freshen it up. It won't be too far-fetched, it's like a year, right, correct, that it was done? So I think that the numbers can be, I guess, calculated if they can give us that alongside.
Yeah, I think you should look at that, and then if there's anything in addition that you want to see in terms of making your assessment, we can add to it. This has things like you would normally see in terms of event projections and those kinds of things. If you want to look at direct and indirect impact of business in the community, I think that's kind of what you're getting at is not just very specific to the types of events that would come in, but kind of what would this, what would this do on the site over the long term in terms of indirect business and those types of things. So we'll provide that to you and then get your feedback.
Now, so we're, we're taking a motion to postpone the item, which means we're not taking the action on any particular stakeholders that we would be meeting with, because we're taking action to delete the, to cancel the item for two weeks, not any action to the item. No, I'm just saying, that's what we're, that's what the motion would be. Now, if we're going to postpone the item for two weeks and identify stakeholders, then it's a different motion.
No, so for clarification, Mayor, no, I just want to involve that, so the motion to postpone to have a community meetings, that, that's the first part of the motion? And then secondary to that, just to give us the impact, the economic impact study?
Okay, yeah.
Would be it, that not, not, not what you mentioned, like we don't need to identify stakeholders.
I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, it's for the community to come to the table and then, then to feel alongside us, they're hearing, you know, we've had already write briefings, but we couldn't talk to them about it. So they just want to have that opportunity to feel that we do that before the vote so that they feel they're part of the process. So that's the part that I'm looking at. But, but overall, I, I do know we, we, what we have currently right now, which is 162,000, that's the only money we have, right? And, and I, from what I gathered in the specs of this, this project, you know, that's what we could afford, and we're, we're not...
I know, we have a motion on the table, so let's, I want to stop the dialogue unless someone wants to drop the second or the motion. So let's take, let's take the item, please.
Yes, sir, and I'm sorry, the postponement was for how many weeks?
Pardon me, ma'am?
How many weeks is the postponement for?
Two or four weeks.
Steph, do you want me two or four weeks? I'm going to go on your guidance there.
Well, I just need clarification, because I'm a little confused. I mean, I understand the community meetings. Are you going to give us additional direction on the impact analysis?
And then we need to lift it.
I would rather you don't do that portion. What I'd rather do there on the second piece is to provide you the information.
Exactly.
And then if you want to put something on the, the next agenda to give us direction...
And that's what we're doing tonight, that we're just going to postpone the item and then bring it forward with different recommendations.
Yes, sir.
So we have, for two or four weeks, that's all we need to know. Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Four weeks, okay, it's four weeks. All right, motion and a second to postpone the item for four weeks?
That is correct. Motion made by Representative Salcido, seconded by Representative Hernandez to postpone the item for four weeks. That'll be till March 12th, 2024, on that motion called for the vote. Representative Salcido?
Aye.
Thank you. End the voting session, and that motion passes unanimously. There's a motion and a second to adjourn the regular city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
And the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 is adjourned at 6:59 PM. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Laura, thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.